Dennis isn't here tonight, so I'm gonna call the meeting into session. Stand up for the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag for the United States of America. And what's to do with the lower reason for the justice one nation under God in the interval with liberty and justice for all. That was my bio, sir, pretty often.
Alright, so we have to do reorganization, then you're a meeting every year. First, I guess we'll start with chair.
Yes, I'd like to nominate that or recommend that Dennis remain chair, so I'd nominate Dennis Arden as chair.
All second.
Anybody else? All in favor of Dennis being chair?
Hi.
Hi. Very well, uh, vice chair? The nominations?
Is that a, are you interested in that, is that?
I would, but it's fine, by all means. All in favor of Lindsay being vice chair?
Hi.
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 Awesome.
We do need a secretary also.
Is this supply immediate or next? Yeah, we do need.
Right, secretary, any nominations?
I'll nominate Nick.
Second.
Very well. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Um, also while we're on reorganizing, the board of supervisors the other day uh, changed their meeting times to seven P M. Um, if you guys are interested in changing to seven P M, it would be recommended so that it's consistent across all the township meetings. So we would just need you guys to vote on that as well.
Is that me?
Is everybody okay with seven?
Yeah, I have a second.
Alright, all in favor?
Hi.
Very good. Alright, Lindsay, your meeting.
Okay. Uh, okay, next on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Did everybody have a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, uh, do I have a motion for approval?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Awesome. Uh, minutes are approved. Uh, the third item on the agenda is the subdivision uh, plot for McDade at seven sixty Norwood Road sketch plan. Is there somebody here?
Hi, I'm Cynthia Smith from Horizon Engineering, and I have with me also Dave and Alex McDade, uh, the owners of the property. And um, uh, the property is approximately three point one acres. And it is uh, just proposed to subdivide into two lots. The property has an existing home, um, home and driveway and and services uh, on the property, and the proposal is to subdivide and provide for a second building lot. Yeah, so um, we're showing here, this is just a sketch plan for now. Uh, thanks. I did do have one. Um, the proposal is to share the existing driveways so as to not create, you know, another point of access out onto the public roadway and um, it's about a hu- a little less than a hundred feet till till the driveway was split off for the new home. Uh, new home in this location and stormwater management uh, to be provided um, as well for the property uh, in the front of the property. There's an existing drainage channel uh, that runs through the property in this area, and uh, that's not proposed for any kind of uh, new crossings or anything like that. So we submitted a formal sketch plan, got a review letter um, from your township engineer, and uh, don't necessarily have any uh, specific concerns. Um, one thing to note, uh, the plan is to provide a public sewer and water for the new home. It was unclear um, when we uh, you know, first started looking at this project whether public water will be available or not, but um, since plan is to connect to public utilities for both. And um, yeah, so that's um, that's about it, I guess. Anything that the planning commission has questions about? Or if there's anything that the engineer wants to bring up specifically, uh, we still have some work to do in terms of engineering for grading and stormwater management uh, before we submit for uh, uh, you know, formal engineering review.
Questions?
I have an understanding that the government's got planning permission, anything? For our, you're already saying there's there's ready to any more laws? For, you know, these local fire basements here.
Yeah, um, the the uh, the current plan I submitted appears, we had a pre-application meeting before they uh, submitted this sketch plan in um, and uh, the lots are large enough to accommodate a second, second home and um, and uh, no, there isn't, it appears it's gonna be um, by right uh, without any um, at this stage of the game, we weren't expecting any waivers um, needed for uh, for the projects here, so nothing, nothing's jumping out at us um, here for this. I, I do think it's a good idea to have a shared driveway, um, the only share driveway easement agreement be- between the two property owners um, uh, for for that portion of it, but no, nothing uh, nothing jumps out at me here at this stage of the game here, so.
What was the um, shaded area through the middle?
Uh, so there's, there's an existing uh, drainage channel that runs through the middle, and then there's um, township prescribed repairing buffers on either side of that.
Are those designated wetlands?
They're not wetlands, it's a, it's a water course.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, well, a study was done on the property by a soil scientist to determine that, so.
But they're rich.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's it's a nar- it's a narrow lot, um, but they can accommodate um, outside the riparian buffer areas, it can accommodate another, other home in that area. Um, there is a water main on the opposite side of Norwood, um, uh, based upon the information that we had in our office, um, so they should be able to tap in for uh, for proposed water. Are you uh, looking to um, to provide water service for the existing dwelling to them, because that's on a well?
So that hasn't worked. That's where we even go.
So are you gonna, you're you're not, you won't propose to connect that? Okay. And uh, the existing home is um, on public sewer though, correct?
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've already spoken with Aqua already about um, you know, service agreement uh, for the new lot, so.
Okay.
Any, any other questions?
Um, I, I'll just bring up just because it's in the review letter, um, there was a comment made, uh, consideration should be given to widen the driveway to allow two vehicles entering and exiting or a bump out for two vehicles to pass each other on the shared portion of the driveway. My inclination is, I mean, the driveway, it was only, there's less than a hundred feet of common driveway before it splits out into the other one. Um, I'd rather not propose more paving and more disturbance if if at all possible, unless someone feels really strongly um, about needing that, that area, uh, you know, like I said, it's less than a hundred feet.
Hmm.
Of a shared portion.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately here, there is a potential for conflicts for vehicles coming and going, um, uh, somebody pulling in at the same time as the other people pulling out. Um, uh, ultimately, I believe talking with the owners, they're gonna occupy one of the homes um, um, here, they currently live in the existing home, and there is a chance that you were moving over to the second home. Um, I think there is that potential, I think it's a situation here where probably a good planning exercise to do. Um, uh, but that's not, that's always can be something that can be added to to um, between the two property owners in the future if needed. Um, if they start seeing, seeing conflicts.
Sorry, I was bringing up the, the lot, the plot plan, if I unlock my phone and it's playing a video. I eat butter, no, I was.
What's that?
Need during construction, no matter what. I mean, you're gonna need something during vehicles that pass each other, story construction, you have the layers. Macos, bullies going in and out of the need.
You would probably set up instructions that's temporary. Keep one diverse and order. Um, people creating that regard in there.
As we have. They'll do that first, won't you? Just part of it, estimating.
Even with uh, I don't know, you have to ask Dan that question, but isn't that part of the estimate?
Uh, yeah, it would have to be shown designed that way and shown that for that, but that's a feasible option for construction purposes to uh, to have that coming in, and then you're not beating up the existing driveway. Um, so that's, that's definitely a feasible option to be, to be done for, for construction.
Yeah, the basin, the basins will be proposed as a stormwater management facility with um, infiltration, so uh, we really don't want to use that for um, sediment control, uh, so the basin's not gonna be a, a sediment control facility, um. You know, it's a small amount of disturbance, it'll be handled by other reverse control measures um, rather than basin.
The driveway's still brown. It is, right, so for the course of construction, the driveway's whatever width the vehicles are gonna make it, right?
Yeah, right.
Point if you choose to go back and then pave it, yeah.
And you know, if it needs to be wider for during construction, then it, you know, maybe it will be, yeah.
I mean, ultimately here, they're, they're here tonight as a sketch plan to review this with you guys, and this is really a, a good topic for you guys to weigh in on and share your opinions on, so when they go to, um, this is a voluntary procedure, they don't need to come in for a sketch plan, but they figured I'd come in and get any feedback from you guys. Um, and uh, ultimately here, um, yeah, I mean, I, I think it's a good idea. Um, I think maybe have you guys weigh in and share what your thoughts are on it, um. And they can uh, design accordingly. I don't, I, I don't know if there's any provision within the ordinance that um, would require that. Um, uh, I'd have to take a closer look at it, but um, uh, um, I just, just think from a, a, a management point of view here, two property owners coming and going and somebody pulling out and having to wait and everything else, I, I think it's a good idea. I'm not concerned about traffic backup on, on, on uh, Norwood or anything, it's not a, it's not a traffic concern for having, waiting for one vehicle to come and go out of there, but uh, just a, just a, a, a practical, practical comment here, so.
I was just gonna say, we, years back, we built a home in Downingtown uh, for a client, and it was required to have a pull-off. And I remember there was a lot of drama about the pull-off, nobody wanted the pull-off, but at the end, it actually was quite nice, and it, and it looked fine, and I was thinking myself that if it's my house, I would have actually gone for the pull-off after watching how it worked out, so I would consider it. It's kinda nice.
So rather, oh.
It's just like a, you know, twenty foot long, just a, it's just like a little pull-off, you know?
Almost like a parallel parking spot.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
How much water goes through that drainage ditch? I'm just worried about what your, your stormwater plan's gonna be and how that's gonna flow through the property, if you're gonna end up changing it.
Yeah, so um, the idea is gonna be to capture um, it's as much as or almost all of the new impervious cover that's gonna be proposed in here and get it directed to the stormwater facility, and that stormwater facility will discharge um, likely, likely under the, the driveway and towards that drainage feature. Um, so that it, uh, you know, once it's managed and reduced as it is required to be, then it'll be uh, discharged, and obviously, we're gonna have to meet township requirements uh, for any, you know, runoff, it's bypassing. Um, I don't have the exact number of how much, how many acres are getting there today. That'll be certainly evident in our stormwater management report as we get through.
So you're gonna go with infiltration though, you said, right? That's gonna be the primary, and you will have overflow.
Oh, yeah.
Them sends it down. Is that tor- where's the roadway, where's the closest roadway?
Well, this is Nor- uh, Norwood.
That's Norwood, okay.
Yeah, so, so the water doesn't get to Norwood, the water parallels, this is um, um, I should just draw a blank on the stream name. Um, but this runs parallel to, 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 to the road down, all the way down through that area. But it's, so the water, the water turns and goes, and goes, goes to the left there, to the west. So it doesn't actually come out to um, um, uh, come out to the Norwood Road there, so.
But falling Norwood parallel for like a mile.
Lud- Lud- Ludwig's, Ludwig's Run.
Yeah.
That was a, that's the name of the, that's the name of the creek.
Ludwig's Run?
Ludwig's Run. Yeah.
Okay, okay. Move on to the next.
Well, thank you very much for your input.
Thank you.
Okay, number four on the agenda is Argus, six seventy-five Peck Road, six lot subdivision review sketch plan.
Uh, Mike Ryan with Argus Property Group, uh, local developer, also resident of, of the township. Uh, we're here tonight to, to present our sketch plan for six seventy-five Peck Road. Uh, we're proposing a six lot subdivision um, using the residential open space option pursuant to section six oh nine of the zoning ordinance. Uh, just quick background, we, we've owned this property for, for a number of years now. Uh, we recently worked with the township uh, and, and uh, provided an easement to the township to help facilitate uh, the upcoming colder project out there. Uh, so the timing was right for us to kinda tweak our plan and uh, and, and move forward with this uh, with this process. Um, we have had a number of plans over the past few years. Uh, the six lots is certainly not the most dense option. Um, we're the most aggressive. Um, we did feel, I felt that this was actually more fitting for this property itself, uh, certainly the surrounding area. Um, it's also very similar to, to a project we did in the township uh, right off New Common Road about ten years ago. Uh, at the time was well received by the township a- and the local residents. Uh, Rich is here with us from D L Howe. Um, they are the uh, the engineer of the plan, uh, they'll be with us throughout the project. Um, Rich can, can answer any, any questions that, that the commission may have um, a- and, and go from there. Um, the only waiver we're asking for at this point is one for the road length. And primarily, that's due to the uh, the initial buffer uh, crossing a- a- at the entryway there. The other thing I would note is the plan does show uh, double loaded sidewalks, sidewalks on each side of the road. I would like the commission to weigh in on, on possibly recommending to reduce that to, to one, one side. Um, I think it's, it's kinda fitting for, for this plan and, and only six homes. Um, other than that, the plan is to be uh, to have this thing um, to conform, um, and that, that's our intent. And I, I would just say, you know, being from, from this area, you know, anytime a boutique type subdivision is proposed or presented, um, I honestly think it's, it's, it's refreshing and uh, a- a- and needed, so I appreciate you guys' time and uh, you know, look forward to hearing your comments.
Right.
So you have six houses, one, two, three, four, five, six. What's preventing you from pushing back? Is that a giant hillside, I'm, I'm presuming?
Looks like it. Um, there are steep slopes, so they're hatched on the, the plants, on all the lots. Um, they initially had a plan that was denser a few years back that uh, Walsh uh, reviewed as well. And it just seemed more fitting just to stay out of there and leave that for open space and keep everything down, just because once you started climbing the hill, it just became snowball effect as, as far as disturbance goes, so that's why they're staying below those slopes.
Okay, the reason why I was asking is because I think, I thought Dan, your letter had mentioned that there was setback variances too, that wouldn't even, that would be needed.
Um, no, the uh, the open space um, uh, option here allows as part of the uh, open space option um, allows for there to be a reduction in lot sizes and um, uh, uh, lot sizes and yard uh, dimensions to setbacks. And uh, so I don't think there was any um, uh, there wasn't any need, that's a provision that's built within the ordinance, it doesn't require a a waiver or variance to allow those, allow those changes to be reduced.
Okay, I saw the, the table here, and that's why I was confused then, because I.
Yeah, so, so um, yeah, so it basically, that above that table says the developer may uh, may be able to reduce the minimum lot size of cold district by fifty percent subject at a thirty-five percent open space requirement. Um, uh, here, so they're allowed to, to have reductions accordingly, uh, if they're providing a minimum of thirty percent open, thirty-five percent open space. They are providing sixty percent open space for this project.
Okay, I misinterpreted that, okay. How does that work with them designating that as open space?
So um, I believe it's the intent and with my recommendation in here that that open space is gonna build, create an H O A. Um, and that open space will be maintained and operated by the homeowners association.
Okay.
Yep. Um, so the, the, the ordinance allows for um, it'd be needed to common space to the township, uh, H O A, open space, um, uh, and uh, we're recommending here to uh, to have that um, being maintained by the H O A. We're also recommending that the road um, uh, be um, private, privately owned by the H O A too.
Is that gonna work with six houses and an H O A?
Yeah.
Okay.
Never heard such small H O A.
So that means all shoveling and plowing would be private? Okay. Is that?
Including the roadway.
I'm curious if that's how the newcomer, is that how you manage?
Brace, brace wearing, it's, it's a public room.
Okay.
Sure. I don't know, that's services. Uh, service for lots, uh, that's made by the H O A.
Okay.
And it's a twenty-four point part of it.
Okay, and that, so there's an H O A for that six?
Share the right way agreement.
Okay.
Each way for seven lots.
Okay, and that works well, has worked well for the ten years, okay?
On sidewalks on that rim?
No.
No. I don't think so, so you're just pretty, pretty not good, I mean. Yeah, I certainly can't see any need to have a sidewalk on the lower side of the rim. And it's to push through.
I think it was, yeah, for school kids, because I don't think they wanted the bus to go up there.
Right.
So it gives the kids an option versus walking on the roadway.
Especially where the private roads are permitted to be twenty-four foot, twenty-four feet in uh, in width, and that's what they're proposed here for this, so with a combination of the twenty-four foot width, um, and um, probably a good idea to have sidewalk, because you're not necessarily have um, a lot of room for, for kids to be walking down the side of the street and still accommodate the vehicles, so.
Does that road have to be curved on both sides then?
Um, the ordinance requires the roads to be, roads to be curbed, um. So.
Is that the low side? You wanted one sheet flow off the road and right into the grassy areas instead of car, carving?
You, you could, I mean, it's.
And
sometimes it's a little easier just to have the curve and actually to control the stormwater. Okay, so.
If you want your.
So I know this is just a sketch plan, and I can't see that far, and I'm not gonna touch my phone again, so, um, what is the, what is the, the proposed uh, square footage of the homes, or at least the footprint?
Um, so what, um, we're proposing anywhere that, that, um,
the footprint is, is shown as I, I think like twenty-three hundred, twenty-three five. Uh, we're proposing homes in the twenty-six hundred to thirty-two hundred square foot range. Um, they're gonna be, we're kinda calling these things um, cottage style homes, um, they're gonna be some first floor master options, uh, well-appointed exteriors, the hardy siding, natural brick, stone um, type finishes, so, so we're trying to make this thing again, like a boutique style little subdivision uh, that has some well-appointed finishes.
What did you say, the, the range in square footage of that?
Twenty-six hundred, thirty-two hundred square feet.
Thank you for not building more than five thousand square.
Just gonna say that, that's a nice size, yeah.
We, we, we've built, we've built some tight ones, you know, and, and we've done well with that.
Yeah.
Find there's a real, real need for.
Cost of, cost of building in these days too.
Yeah, I mean.
Find a buyer, twenty-six hundred to thirty-two hundred.
Right.
Thank you.
I like the uh, sixty-five percent open space, that's awesome.
Okay.
I was a little worried when I first heard about a plan for this lot and stuff, but I, I kinda liked the layout. Um, not taking the houses and just kinda scooting them towards the back, not up the hill, kind of away from the street, so it kinda, I drive this road twice a day, so in my opinion, it kinda fits in with kinda the other cul-de-sacs or other kind of residential streets that branch off of Peck and doesn't come down and interfere with, especially down in this section. There's a lot of open fields and farms and historic houses and stuff that this doesn't really hinge on that kinda neighborhood feel for that area, so.
Yeah, it was like a good layout up the street, it's kind of, it was a similar design.
I don't know the name, yeah.
Same side of the road is.
Yeah.
Close to the school.
About a quarter mile in each direction or something like that.
What was the waiver, the waiver you're talking about up at the top, the entrance? I didn't understand that.
Length, length.
West, so it's where the road lands.
The road lanes.
See. Yeah, five, I, yeah, a lot smaller than major, it can only have a full second five hundred feet.
Oh.
This, oh, it's, you're lost seven hundred or seven fifty. Uh, so we're looking for extension is because of the first two hundred feet of the site, we can't use.
Got you.
Crosswind there. Yeah, we had a different plan actually, had to direct it, run it on your south. So, you know, across the border of the preparing armor, um, and it grew a bit shorter, it's like you know, we're trying to time soon we get a bit of a new core that's coming in and grow it between three and here, so it's a better place to have it.
What is the sightline from, from Peck? Like, are those, uh, there's an elevation and then it kinda drops off, or is it flat? Like, can you see all of these houses from Peck?
When you came on the bottom of the screen coming towards the road or proposing, you're, you're kinda coming down towards the right. Um, I haven't been down there probably in the last three or four blocks, but I believe, especially with the slate going out, you're coming down and you can kinda see that little area and come down and start building the bed, you know, like looking at the state.
Okay. Yeah.
We, we also did convert it's like this, this, uh, and entrance, so there's not an issue.
Okay.
You know.
But Lindsay, everything, everything kinda, it's, it's, there's a pond down, down in the lower end, and then it basically comes, comes uphill there from, from there, so these houses will all sit up um, pretty good distance in elevation height here, so um, I mean, the back house is ten, twenty, thirty, forty, the, 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 the back lots there at the end of the cul-de-sac are whatever, a good forty, fifty feet above the uh, above, above Peck Road. So it slopes up pretty, pretty good in that, in that area.
But they're way back.
Yeah, they, they're, they're.
Yeah.
The pond there, I don't even realize what they're just driving it all the time, like it's, because it's at a similar elevation as the road drops. If, if you're the driver, you're not looking over your shoulder to see all the.
That's what I was wondering.
Their direction kinda gets lost.
What does the property look like today? Is it, is it wooded, is it an open field?
It uh.
I know, it's just slums.
We, when I was, we let it go a little bit, uh, so it's not the best still.
Oh. But it's not like dense mature trees.
Yeah, that's, are there mature trees? There's not, they're not showing on the, there's, I see a few.
Just see a couple in the box.
Those aren't really the, the, that doesn't reflect the existing, to be sure. Okay. Are there trees in that green area? Exist, there's some mature trees.
There's definitely trees in there.
I don't know.
Yeah. It's a sweet layout. I like it.
I'm curious, just uh, just some of the commercial stuff that's come before us as well, just from a sustainability standpoint, any of the plans that you have for the homes themselves, um, thinking about things like um,
High performance efficiency. You know, like building envelopes that are high performance, that kinda thing.
I mean, that's, that's it. Very good. Residential versus.
Yeah, I, I, just in general, thinking about some of the, some of the I don't know, I'm, the word is escaping me, forgive me, um, just some of the, uh, just, well, yes, but I don't know what.
Carbon emissions, you know?
Geothermal or something, like, we don't know. Solar.
Right, but lead is certainly is commercial.
For renovation, you talked about using natural materials, so rock, stone, those things are natural material, they don't, they don't have a big carbon footprint producing that.
Yeah.
That sort of thing. Obviously, I'm sure they're gonna use a, an energy consultant to design reading cooling systems probably very tight homes, I mean.
Very much, I, you know, this is, so, I should say.
Hmm. But there's the, yeah, there's not a lot of options in, in residential.
Well, there.
We don't know. Well, yeah, you gotta pay for it. There definitely are options. You know, there's, there's a, I mean, the, actually, these days now, you do need to blow air door test.
Yeah.
Buildings, as you know, so at least we know you're gonna hit a one point or a three point oh A C H, which is better than back in the day, but you know, we're just asking the question, because there are opportunities to do a little better than, so some builders these days will say, well, I'm not just gonna hit three point oh A C H on the blower door test, I'm gonna make a really tight home, and I'm gonna do like a two point one, between one and two point oh A C H, um, and those things make the high efficiency heat, heating and, and cooling actually, you know, have way less carbon impact, that's all, so that's kinda what we're asking.
Yeah, I, I, I see it's just a words, no, like, and I you know, what, what words? Yeah, I, I'd say it's just a words, though, like, you know, when, when we're starting the architectural conversation, um.
Totally.
I really don't understand that, give sense, uh. Of the way you're asking, right, and that's all the nostalgia to go.
Sure.
That's, that's kind of the foundation of this whole plan.
Yep.
Regarding the length of the road. Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Um. We'll discuss that, I don't have any issue with it, I think it's kind of reasonable request considering what and what they want, how they're gonna lay it out and. Yeah.
Plus, that's how the way you're putting it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Exactly, yeah.
I think it's well done.
Yeah.
Um, there is another issue that I want to talk about, though. Um. And it can be addressed later, but, um, there is a note in the review letter regarding the floodplain management. And it, it apparently is not identified by FEMA as a flood zone. And I know from a lot of experience that it definitely is a flood zone right around the, the thing there, I actually brought a picture that I just happened to take back on. July twenty-fifth. Of this year, and this was in Ida, that was a couple of years before, this was just some big storm we got where. That whole area around the culvert was impassable. And my concern is because that location, right, you can see by the telephone poles, as I interpret where the road's gonna go. And that could become an impassable problem for emergency vehicles and the residents there and anything like that, but I know the township's. Working on the culvert, you mentioned that there's a potential reelevation that I wasn't aware of, I'd, I'd just like some input. To hear kind of what the.
I'll, I'll take, I'll, I'll, I'll take this here, um, so our office is, um, just went out to bid and have rewarded, um, uh, the culvert replacement project here. Um, um, at that area during that, um, uh, design process, which was done by Kristen Boldass from my office. Um, they did a, um, a flood analysis of that culvert area. And, um, currently, the, there's a floodplain shown on the plan, um, that, that was, I might be sure, Rich, do you guys calculate that floodplain, um?
Okay, cool. G I S.
Okay. So, so, I mean, but ultimately, we did analysis, um, of the flood, floodplain pre-conditioned and then post-conditioned with that culvert. And, uh, the, the floodplain right now as designed will not, they don't actually have to cross the floodplain. It actually, the culvert's been sized to manage, manage that water as a larger, larger size culvert from, from there. And the driveway, um, the, the, the proposed road is going in the existing driveway location. Um, and, uh, ultimately here, that road is no, no longer gonna be within the floodplain. Because it's, um, the floodplain is gonna be reduced in size based upon the culvert, culvert replacements.
Do you think such a backup is a, I mean. That stream, like, I live on it a quarter mile up too, and it, it overflows a lot, but if.
Yeah, so, so the.
Adequately sized to handle that flow, so it doesn't back up.
It, it, it's sized to handle, and I, I'd have to verify this with Kristen, what, what they managed it for, I believe they sized to handle the hundred year storm events. And, um, uh, ultimately here, um, yeah, you, so you're, of course, we have events that exceed the one hundred year probability storm event occurring. And so I'm not gonna say you won't ever see flooding on that again. Um, uh, but the culvert has been, has been over, has been sized to, to manage the flow, um, um, for, for that area. That's the reason why we're doing it, I mean, we, the reason the township has undertaken that project to replace that culvert is it was a known flooding issue.
And in anticipation of the six, the, the subdivision.
Uh, uh, it was independent of, I mean, we knew this was in the works. And our design wasn't modified or tweaked or edited it here, it was there to, we did design to do the culvert regardless if. If, 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 if Argus ever came in and decided to develop this or not, we had in the back of our mind, we knew that was gonna happen and. We worked with them and were able to provide us, we had to relocate sensory sewer, and they were, um, a cooperative neighbor to, uh, to help provide easements for us. Um, so, um, it, it works out in, in everyone's benefit, um, for here, but it was this project what was going on regardless of what was gonna happen on this property.
And it'll, it'll take into account any kind of impact that the impervious surface from the subdivision, it will account for that and hold enough as.
So, so, so this project here will be required, and we're in the sketch plan phase. It, it will be required to manage the runoff based upon the current township ordinances, the township ordinances require them to make sure that their post-developed. Flow rate does not exceed the pre-developed condition. So, um, so we didn't go through and analyze this, um, analyze the culvert to accommodate additional flow. We figured whatever came in here, they're gonna be required to manage their flow, they're not permitted. To increase that rate of runoff leaving their site after they develop it. So they're gonna be doing, they have a basin showing up, um, up on the higher end of this here, um, which, um, uh, I guess I'm a little in back of my mind here, kind of curious how they're gonna manage runoff. From down slope of that basin, um, so they're gonna have to figure out, um, uh, means and methods to control their runoff. Uh, but, but ultimately here, they will, and they will have some, um, some room and ability to do that parallel to the roadway, but. Um, that's something they, they, they have to come back and design and submit to us for, for review.
Thank you for your explanation on the culvert and the engineering process for that, that satisfies my concern.
Yeah.
Just. It's safe. It's, I think, they do that a lot, problems everywhere.
Yeah. For access.
Okay.
I had a couple of questions here, um, I guess from, um, uh, maybe for the applicant here, with the, the plans for the pond area here, I don't know, um. What you guys were thinking, um, related to, uh, to, to the existing pond, was there any, any plans for, uh, for any, any remediation? You're keeping that pond, removing that pond, obviously will be owned and maintained by the HOA. Um, so I want to want any feedback from, from, from you guys on that. I'm asking, yeah, I'm asking if you guys had, had any thoughts on that. Um. That, that's fine, I, I.
Just to, to sort of like. Do you thought that, do you mean, uh, can we just submit a law? Uh, like, do you think, uh, what should be at this point? Um, you, you, everything that pizza, the string and, and the best of all, like, in, in certain.
That is, that is, that is true, we, we've had those same discussions with the E P on other projects over the years, they, they, uh, they, um. They, they do, they aren't a fan of these for the, for the, for the habitat for the streams, it definitely impacts.
It's like uterification nightmare, right, it just tend to. Getting all kinds of stuff, it's not part of the natural ecosystem.
Right. Um. I had another question, I forget what I was gonna ask.
Can I ask, what, what was, what's the average size of the lots then? The average sizes of the lots.
Um, well, now, there's the minimum that they can be, and so we're roughly about fifteen thousand, so there's, you're not geometrically.
Right, 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 just average, yeah.
Once this out.
Yeah, the, the largest, I think, lot six, um, is that a twenty-nine thousand, there's a twenty-six thousand, it might be a twenty-nine thousand. For a lot, uh, the largest, the biggest lot in the end of the cul-de-sac there. Um. I guess from, um, we did get a, um, a note from your neighbor, which I know you had met with here, um, I wanted to ask about, uh, about. He brought up comment about a potential, uh, access over to the property to the south. Um, um, for future connection. Um, I guess the Alba, Alba property here. Um, I don't know, uh, you, what you guys thoughts were on, on that one and. And, uh, for that area, so have you considered that?
We, we did, we're, we're. Or.
Okay.
Where, what's this?
Yeah, so, um, so, uh, this is the Alba property back over in here, and I, I haven't looked at the size and what that potential is for that lot. Um, but the, uh, the applicant has talked to his neighbor up, um, up here, Mr. McQuail. And, uh, he had, he had made a recommendation about a potential access, um, to, uh, to provide for, for the Alba property to come, come through here. So, um, I, I think, um, it's something I guess we should, should talk about here and adding more lots to, uh. To that private road and how that would, would be structured, um, but I guess I just wanted to ask their opinion if they would. Um, be welcome to consider, um, uh, that, 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 that here, but I guess ultimately, it all really can depend. Depend, depend on what potentially would happen on that lot, and I have done any work, look at, at that property to see what that future development possibility would be. The, the, uh, the ordinance does discuss about running, uh, cul-de-sacs. To adjoining properties to provide for future, um, uh, connectivities or good planning exercises here for that. Um, I, I had not really paid attention to this during my review, I had noted that it really didn't make sense to, to come up with this whole area up here being, um, steep slope areas. I didn't think it was feasible to, uh, to extend that up, you have residential homes up in here, um, you have a, an open space, uh, a, 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 a private lot here. Uh, Mr. McQuail's lot, um, it really didn't make sense to, to be bringing that, um, cul-de-sac up for that elevation change. Um, but I had not considered and looked at what these, uh, what, what the potential is for this property over here. Um, so I just wanted to ask the applicant if he, if he would consider that, um, makes good from plenty exercise, but. It also makes a little complications of now having. Having access to a private road for adjoining it, that's running practice.
Well.
It was a turn of properties connected to that view, shared driveway.
Yeah, that, that, yeah, I believe that's the case down in here, correct? Yeah.
So, I'm just trying to understand or think about. Why.
Why would they want to connect it?
Why, why, why you said that, that's about. Uh, they could say. The thing.
Yeah, as a redevelopment? Okay.
So that then raises other questions about. Would they then take another road coming out there, so it'd be kind of a big loop? Like if. That other driveway would then be combined like this or.
So, so, I'm, I'm leaving this structure, uh, along the, I don't really, but.
Yeah.
Um, just off this.
Okay.
They have, and I, I believe.
It's very much.
You see, I, I figured that, yes, on good drives, and Christian's family, by the way, the neighbor to the worst. And, uh, basically good drives, this was the standard provision of providing. Right away to the product line for potential future development connection. This is on a general album with the names of themselves. And the issue for them is they have a, yeah, flag lot, it's just their drive with a bridge crossing that accesses a product. So this development happening here, which gives them a potential for another opportunity to redirect their drive or location development feature. So from a planning perspective. One of us spent four years planning through architecture, would be a good, could be a good time, essentially, you know, to.
So what does that look like, some kind of easement on the, the, the right most cul-de-sac block? Yeah. In that area there.
Hmm.
Well, yeah, yeah, the issue of problems here. That's not, we're not making that a public road.
That, yeah.
I mean, that's. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, right.
That was my one thought as well, is just if it's maintained by the HOA and it's a private road, I think that they ultimately.
We're part of. We're the only owner. We use that. You hold on, homeowner associated, and. You work it out, the albums, whatever, the next week.
That would only be a driveway extending to.
Sure, but only could be for river, you're directly, if we're extending the cul-de-sac, you know, there's, 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 there's a, my. Your bosses. So, you know, basically this, look at the right way around that whole set, just taking two lines and on the traffic line. That part is reported later.
So. We've already, I definitely, cul-de-sac is depicted, it's already longer. That. Permitted, right?
They'd be seeking.
Like, we're all okay with it as this, but talking about extending that, I think. I, I don't know, personally, I feel like we need to see kind of what this looks like in some more detail to really evaluate it. Or really have a, a put together opinion on it. Yeah.
Are you guys adding this to your sketch or now? So then, we're here to review the sketch.
Yeah.
I mean, if they want to then come in, you know, the neighbor wants to come in and provide a sketch that shows the attachment, that's something worth reviewing, but I think at this point in time, you know. If they don't plan on adding that to the sketch into their plan, then we have to.
The point is, you don't, you don't need to sketch through the other problem, it's just a provision for essentially dimensioning with you. We did the exact same thing on our property, twenty-five acre property, the good drive that developed. Twenty-three years ago. Where basically the road, it's important, road, roadway, there's a bit of a, right away to the, to rely on, but keeping your connectivity. Subject to whatever the, the property owners agree to the tactics, blessing where we're at in the future.
No, I hear you, but if they don't put it on their sketch, then.
Also, if you don't, they're going to be holding any two lines, if you put a port.
Would be.
You would be adding easement?
Yeah, you would have to.
Yeah, but now are you gonna depress the curb and sidewalk on it too? Uh, when we get into this, I think this is, this is not a woman area. Right, so, so let's, let's, yeah. Yeah. We hear what you're saying, I think the developers are what you're saying. I also like to say, we've had the mic last week, as you know, very kind of me, less than the others. We're, we're, we're against good one, like to play it. And provided it solely for our conversation with Mike and the topic down. With our concerns to address in the detail that you heard. Mostly for myself. It feels with, with flooding and stormwater issue in New York. And hoping that along with raising the road with elevation, that road, raising entry road elevation, that that also has a great problem. Ninety percent of the funding in the food here. If we're getting funding through three models of our property in New York. Now, the songs, where this is execution access, potential of this property. And some visual screening of your privacy. Lights coming off the cul-de-sac, so they're not finding themselves. Because of those are the things. And if, to answer your question, whether it's near energy, half the zone. For example, for community efficient levels. That's the current problem.
Thank you. Okay. Well, there's nothing to vote on in this, so I think, if anybody has any further questions related to that. Or any other questions in general, I didn't know if you were.
So, so the only thing I, I would think the applicant would like to have, and I think we've just covered it, but I just want to make sure that it's, it's clear. Is that, um, uh, the sidewalk and, uh, feedback here for that would help them when they go to preliminary engineering design. Um, is ever, was in favor of just doing sidewalk on located on, on one, on one side of the lot. Uh, on one side of the road, um, and, uh, and then, uh, it sounds, again, it sounds like everybody was okay with the, um, the waiver. Um, the, the preliminary concept here for the waiver request. Um, uh, that, those are the two things, if I was in their shoes, I'd be looking to make sure I got a clear answers for, and it sounds like, I think we've covered them, but just want to make sure. That, that, that is the case, that.
You just depicted here, yes.
Yep.
Sidewalk and length of the, of the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think the only thing I would, I, I'm fine with all that, I think the only thing I would do is, it would be good to see in the next sketch, the easement. Just.
If, if, if you go that.
If, yeah, yeah, if you're gonna do it, yeah. And we can just, I mean, I, I think we can all understand what you're saying, but it'd be good to see it on the plan, if, if you're gonna do it.
Yeah.
It makes sense.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any other questions from you all? Okay, and. Good.
I'm, I'm good.
Thank you. Okay, that's the last of the, um, agenda items. Are there any, are there any, um, comments from the public who is here who may not have. Said anything about either of the projects that we discussed? Okay, and no comments on Zoom, obviously. Then I think we're good to close the meeting. What do I say?
Shut it down. Germany, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Anyone?
I'll motion to adjourn the meeting.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Excellent.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Hi.
Uh, meaning a jerk, thank you. Thank you. Builds confidence.
Yeah, but I mean, the thing is that he's kind of.
Thank you.
He's kind of right, he's like, well. We just. We just want to, that's what I want to have, that. Just want to know that we can.
No problem.
Have the options up, but they, whatever happens, still has to still really true, you know? So it's kind of like, in a way, I was like, hey, I want to, I want to see what's. Right, what's there, but the point is, we don't have no idea where that came from.
Yeah.
They just want to know.
I see you.
They can poke a hole into that cul-de-sac.
Right, but, 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 once it's.
Yeah.
You kind of want to set the groundwork.